Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing now is oral communication. Do we have something to read in the record?
Yes, I'd like to read a letter from George Paquette into the record. It says, "Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'm sorry we cannot attend in person on Wednesday. We will be online watching and appreciate your consideration for our request to make an exception to Avalon City Ordinance 3-1.317-E1 that would allow properties in the flats area with off-street parking to include an electric golf cart with their existing short-term rental. I believe this adjustment will encourage a greener community, improve the tourist experience, and generate more transient occupancy tax revenue for the city. We have invested significant time and money into our home and want to appeal to families to come to enjoy Avalon. We charge a premium fee and want to provide a premium experience. Nearly all of our guests, an average of eighty to eighty-five percent per month, reach out after booking and request to rent our golf cart for their stay. They have children, senior parents, and family members with disabilities, and want to stay in the flats. With only two rental company options, golf cart rentals often sell out to cruise ship passengers, leaving vacationers with limited options to visit Descanso Beach or actually see the town. Guests are forced to walk their entire stay, and they leave remembering being confined to a small area with children that don't want to walk all day. Our goal is to avoid the rowdy party crowd and include an electric golf cart and off-street parking. Would help attract more families to the island for their next vacation. This will not impact overnight street parking. It will reduce pollution by incentivizing more homecomers-- sorry about that-- homeowners to move to electric and build off-street parking to allow more parking overall, and exchange gas golf carts for electric. While only a few homes currently have off-street parking, an electric cart, and a transient rental license, or CUP, this would be a perfect opportunity to monitor its adoption and prepare for when California eventually phases out gas golf carts. These are the requirements suggested. A CUP or transient rental license, an approved electric golf cart, have adequate off-street parking, and plug-to-charge cart at the off-street parking. Key points to consider for this consideration include incentives for eco-friendly transportation. This will encourage property owners to transition from gasoline-powered carts to electric alternatives. This shift aligns with Avalon's green initiatives as outlined in the municipal code. Incentives for off-street parking development will encourage property owners to invest in building off-street parking, reducing congestion in the flat areas. Improve tourist experience by including electric golf carts with short-term rentals. We can provide a better overall experience for vacationers who want to explore the flat areas and other parts of Avalon. Increased TOT revenue will make short-term rental properties in the flats more appealing to the potential guests, resulting in higher occupancy rates and increased TOT revenue for the city. Excuse me. Thank you, George Paquette.
Thanks, Donna, but I skipped one thing, and that was roll call.
Thank you.
Oops. I don't want to read it again. Okay. Roll call, Commissioner Putnam?
Here.
Commissioner Romero?
Present.
Commissioner Ruth?
Here.
Commissioner Say?
Here.
Commissioner Smith? Ouch. Chairman Glass?
Here.
Chairman Hewitt? I mean, Commissioner Hewitt? Commissioner Kennedy? Ouch. Okay.
All right. We're gonna move along to the consent calendar. Eighty minutes.
Move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Eric, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Commissioner Putnam?
Aye.
Commissioner Romero?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruth?
Yes.
Commissioner Say?
Yes.
Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Chairman-- Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Okay, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six yeses, Scott and two absent.
We'll move along to the first public hearing.
Do we have the resolution, item number two? Is that--
Well, did we not do that at the same single? So we need to do the same thing for the resolution.
Okay. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Avalon, California granting and approving a coastal development permit and site plan approval for the use of the operation of a temporary immersive projection dome experience. Comes in AMC Municipal Code 9-6.203, theaters, auditoriums, dance halls, and/or arcades and amusement. This item was approved on March 21st, 2023, and the resolution was posted separately. The item is for a temporary use permit coastal development and site plan for an immersive projection dome. It'll be located at Ten Island Plaza, in between the plaza and the mini-golf.
Move to approve that rental.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Commissioner Putnam?
Aye.
Commissioner Romero?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruth?
Yes.
Commissioner Say? Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Okay, so we can have six yeses, Scott, and two absent.
Got it. Thank you.
And Chairman Glass, before we start on the public hearing, I think-- I'd just like to introduce our two guests, I think, if they could introduce themselves. I notice we have their name tags switched around incorrectly there, so don't be confused. That's just trying to make it difficult for you. Thank you. So there'll be, you know, at least Kelly, I think, will be a regular guest, either in person or video. Amy, I'm not sure how regular she'll be, but maybe they can introduce themselves and why they're here.
Yeah, so it's really nice to meet everyone. Thank you so much for having us. My name's Amy Vasquez, and I'm the president and founder of Sagecrest Planning and Environmental. So we are a Southern California firm. Our offices are in San Juan Capistrano. We have a team of twenty-three planners, one building official, and two coenforcement officers. So we serve jurisdictions all throughout Southern California. With me today is Kelly Rabuffo. She's an excellent project manager, so you're in wonderful hands. I just wanted to come today and introduce the firm and answer any questions you might have about our company. But I just want to say we're thrilled to partner with staff and be a part of this beautiful community, so we look forward to working with everybody. So thanks again for having us.
Welcome.
Yeah, and I'll just say a little bit about myself. My name is Kelly. I've been a professional planner for over eleven years. Eight of those years is working for the City of Orange, in Orange County. So I've been working in Southern California for a while now. My specialties are dealing in current planning, so dealing with development applications, doing-- including the one you're seeing this evening. And then also I have a specialty dealing with historic preservation and design review. So I'm hoping to bring those talents to the city as well.
Well, welcome.
And I just want, if I could just briefly, on behalf of the city, I just want to say that the changes, we've had more interaction with them. This is our first Planning Commission meeting. We've had more interactions with them because as applications have come through the city, we've sent them off to Sagecrest for their professional review, and they've already taken some steps that we haven't had here in a while. For example, nothing-- you're not gonna see the things coming to your agenda that actually get scheduled unless it's fully gone through the process. Sagecrest gets the initial application. They're sending letters out to the applicants, checklist saying we need the following items before they'll even get agendized for you. So we're really hopeful that this is gonna make your job much easier, much more efficient, get you everything you need before it ever gets here. Hopefully, we're not gonna be in a position where you're saying, "Well, we just got something five minutes ago," or "We have to continue this for another two weeks or a month," or whatever. So, so far, I'm extremely pleased with the work they're doing. I have no reason to believe that it won't continue, so I just wanted to throw that in, of everything that's going on behind the scenes.
Thank you. Okay. Moving along to first public hearing, number three. If you want to let us know what we're--
Kelly will be giving that staff report, her first one.
Yeah. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners.
I have to leave. Proximity.
All right. Chair Commissioners, good evening. The item before you this evening is a public hearing to consider a tentative parcel map and a coastal development permit for subdivision of a property located at 110 Chimes Tower Road. This property is located in the high-density residential zoning district and also high-density residential general plan land use designation. The property is currently developed with a single-family residence on a lot that's a little bit over eight thousand square feet in size. The proposal is to subdivide the property into two new parcels. So Parcel A would be approximately a little over twenty-three-hundred square foot lot that would be vacant, and Parcel Number Two, or Parcel B, would be a little over fifty-seven-hundred square feet and would contain the existing single-family residence. We did, sought to review the development standards for the zoning district and determined that the proposed subdivision does meet the minimum lot area and lot width requirements for subdivision. So each lot would be conforming to current code requirements, and the new vacant parcel would be a buildable lot per the City of Avalon code. The project is considered a subdivision only, so there's no new development proposed as part of the project at this time. Staff reviewed the project for compliance with the annual growth policy for the city as well as tentative parcel map and coastal development permit requirements, and found the project to be in conformance with those standards. If you'd like a little bit more information, please, on any of those requirements, please let me know separately at that time. Staff has, and find that the project qualifies for streamlined review under Section 15183 of SEQA. I'm here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have some questions, planning on this, before we open the public hearing? Move in. Open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak for or against this matter, they come forward now. State your name and your address, and tell us what you think.
David Thompson, 110 Chimes Tower Road. Yeah, I'm in favor of it. No, do you guys have any questions?
Sir, applicant, so anyone has any questions before we go further?
You guys have done a good job. I was a little bit upset because you kept coming back and saying, "Oh, you need this, and this, and this," but it sounds like everything's in where it should be now. So, Donna, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Thanks, Ed. Anybody else wish to speak before we close the public hearing? Okay, we're closed. Discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion. It seemed very straightforward, and simple, and in compliance, so I'd make a recommendation that we approve it with the conditions provided by staff and under Conditions 1 through 4 on page eight.
I'll second.
Anything else before we vote for vote? Call for vote, Donna?
Okay. Commissioner Romero?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruth? Commissioner Glass?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Okay, Scott, we have four yes, and two absent, and one abstain.
Thank you.
Move on to item number four.
She's a transient rental. Oh, that's right. So this is a transient rental license at 215 Beacon. They are requesting for a transient rental license and coastal development permit to allow renting or leasing a room with or without table boards in a dwelling unit for periods of fewer than thirty consecutive days. It's at 215 Beacon, and it's for units one and two. The owner-- Oh, I'm sorry. The owner and the applicant is Olaf Nasil, and he is in the audience and available for any questions. The property is located within the special commercial zone. The property contains two bedrooms. Property-- the unit number two, I apologize. Property number-- unit number two contains two bedrooms and two baths, and the other unit contains one bedroom and two baths. The property manager for the unit is listed as Julia Nasil, and her contact information is included in your staff reports. The subject property and all the surrounding properties are developed with single and multi-residential units. The requested transient rental license does not involve any physical changes to the existing residence that would adversely affect or be materially detrimental to adjacent uses, buildings, and structures. The saturation map attached in the staff report indicates that oversaturation will not occur. The proposed project is categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the state SEQA guidelines, and minor alterations in land use limitations, which do not result in changes in land use or density. The project requires a coastal development permit under Section 9-8.102B2V of the Avalon Municipal Code. The project is within the three-hundred-foot appealable zone. City staff have received letters in opposition of the rental license. Each of you have a copy in front of you or included in your packets. Staff is recommending the Planning Commission find the project categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the state SEQA guidelines, minor alterations in land use limitations, adopt the findings necessary as outlined in the staff report to support approval of the coastal development permit, including that the project is within the three-hundred-foot appealable zone, and find the application is allowed under the 2023 annual growth policy. That concludes my presentation. I am available for questions, as well as Mr. Nasil and Mrs. Mary Stein.
Okay. Do we have any questions of staff?
Yeah. I have been up there, and I think this is kind of-- well, for starters, we at our packet got one set of a floor plan. There's two units.
There should be two.
So it's front and back?
It's front and back.
The one at the back showed-- the one I got--
The one.
The back showed a existing den and a new den.
It showed a bedroom and a den, and two baths.
But it didn't show a whole unit. Anyway, it's, I don't know. And the one we did get is that upstairs, downstairs, whatever. But beyond that, and then also, there's references here in this letter that we just got tonight about the front yard and the front retaining wall. That's city property, isn't it?
It is city property.
Yeah, that's on city property, but this sort of says, this is, you know, their front yard, their front. But that, you know, some time ago, we approved parking to do. But, you know, that-- so that's the front yard. Now it's not parking. So that's--
If I could just be clear, it's not the front yard. We do have staff here, if you want any further detail regarding that. We have Public Works Director Bob Breen Law that could probably clarify that issue.
Go ahead. Yeah, so that's under an encroachment permit from the Planning Commission and also City Council. It's not finished yet, and it has an access that goes down the Burma Trail that has to be finished. And those, instead of improvements that we have there now, they're gonna have to be modified. And I already let the applicant know that they have to be modified before we final that encroachment permit. So--
Yeah, but that's--
So what you'll see, it will be parking, okay, unless the applicant comes back and requests something of City Council, because that's what was approved by the encroachment permit.
Yeah, that was what was approved then, but, you know, with-- I know you could park on AstroTurf, but it doesn't look exactly--
We haven't-- the city has not approved that. Staff has not approved that yet, so we'll be working with the applicant to get that in.
Yeah, this letter we got talked about the front yard and the front retaining wall. It sort of implies it's part of the property. But my main concern is, is that that's a mess behind there, and I see we've got different things referencing the adjacent property to the north, but there's also property to the west, and that's a huge draw. I mean, that's a lot of engineering that's gotta go on to stabilize all of that. You know, there's--
I'm able to address any questions that are in the public right away right now.
But I was thinking--
Otherwise, I deferred to the building official, because he's been out there.
I understand, but, I mean, we're trying, we're only looking at doing two units, except that I don't think that's ready to be done. I mean, that's a mess in there, and you can clean it up, but to stabilize it, that's quite, you know, quite an engineering thing, and I think this should come back. I don't think we have enough information about the actual units to do this, and I'm concerned about the ready of the property.
Thank you, Bob.
We haven't opened the public hearing yet, so we'll just have to wait a sec. And is there any more questions of staff? And I can open the public hearing, and we can move on. Okay, we'll open the public hearing.
Yeah, please move.
Could you go to the podium, please? To the microphone?
Yep.
So first, just, so we have...
I'm sorry, could you state your name?
Yeah, I'm Olaf Nasil. I'm the owner of 215 Beacon, and we have, for the last two years, renovated this old house, duplex house, 102 years old, and we brought it back to its original condition, so it's beautiful. So we renovated both units, and we have final approval on those two units. And then we proceeded to renovate the front yard that was coming down the hill, so we built a beautiful rock front wall, fronting beacon, a beautiful wall. I'm sure you've seen it. I think the public likes it, the neighbors like it, it's beautiful, and preserved the property. And I understand your concern. I mean, if anybody wants to park there, it's open for anybody to park there, you know? It looks a lot better than it did before. So that's all done, we have permits for that. And then we proceeded to renovate the backyard that we have permits for, and grade down the lot. And in the process of doing that, there was a big rainstorm this, this Christmas, this winter, so part of the retaining wall between me, my lovely neighbor, Mary, and Randy, and Sue, that old wall fell down, so we're in the process of rebuilding a new wall. So we clean up that whole thing. But we always do a very quality job, and today, we're here to get approval for two transient permits, so we can recover some of our cost. So I don't know if you have any questions, would that help clarify things?
Well, but the retaining, the wall behind, it influences more than the adjacent 209. That's your one neighbor, but you've got issues beyond that.
What other issues? I don't have any other issues than that.
There's not a large drop-off there? No, no problem, just a lot of dirt, really tall?
We need to put back, the old retaining wall between my property and Mary's property, that retaining wall would be rebuilt, the way it was, but much stronger, so it stays. And we'll probably have to put a fence on top of it to make it safe, you know?
Yeah, but you have other properties that are influenced by that area, and I...
No, there's other properties influenced, but that...
No other one? That's your only wall?
That's the only wall that we need to...
It's the only wall you need to replace, but there's dirt behind. You sit low, according to the hill, to the west.
That's the only, that's the only concern, that we're going to build back that retaining wall, everything else.
Well, I think that you should be concerned with the property to the west. You're quite a way down, so if you, I don't know, but I do think that, to grant you, I don't think this is, you know, move-in-ready, and I don't know what the, you know, I saw, we saw a partial then, partial plan of the second unit, the one we did get, the floor plan.
We submitted both floor plans to the city, so there's no confusion there.
Well, I haven't seen it, I don't know.
Can I?
I haven't seen it.
Can I?
I have one sheet, and then, and then on the other side, that doesn't look like a unit to me somehow, to my mom.
You have both floor plans.
That's all I got. I got this one. This is both of them.
You, you have the packet with both floor, did everybody get the packet with both?
But this, this is not a complete view.
She is correct. It doesn't say where the kitchen is and the living area.
I haven't seen the floor plan. I'm pretty honest.
I mean, it's a, it's before you for a transient rental license, no, it's still approval of the floor plan necessarily, but...
No, but to see, but it doesn't join the two units. I don't, I'm just saying, it's not, it's not really complete.
So, I just have a couple of questions. I think it's for staff, though, so can I?
You can, and I also want to say our chief building official, John Gilbert, is also here available for questions.
So, I just want to make sure that these grading permits, were they, were they obtained prior to the digging and the removal of? They were? Okay. And, because I didn't see any, like, shoring up or anything underneath that when I went and looked at, at the job site. So my whole concern with this transient application, transient rental application, is the safety of the people that potentially will be staying at these units, because I didn't see anything in that that is like a wall or a fence to, because you can say that, you tell your guests not to go in an area, but you just don't have control of that.
I, I understand. So what we can do, if I get approval contingent on that I'm finishing the retaining wall, then that'll be completely okay with me. And we have actually separated the backyard, where we do the improvements, from the front yard for the houses, as you can see on the picture.
I didn't see that. I went up the other day, and I didn't see, it just looked like a little tiny wall.
Well, we did it now.
Oh, you did it, too?
Yeah.
There's pictures with, with Olaf's letters, and there is a picture of the wall.
I'm all about safety, so my, my whole concern is, it didn't look like it was, I'm, I'm not an engineer by any means, or...
No, but you just look, we separate the backyard from the front yard.
But I just feel like there should be some work done prior to any kind of an approval.
Like I said before, I'm okay with if I get, if it's contingent on that I'm finishing the retaining wall, that'd be fine with me.
Oh, right here.
I've got one more question, then, so where is your front?
Come again?
Where is your front yard? Where is the property? It's hard to tell, because it goes out to the new wall that's on the city property.
Well, you can see on the picture that I took, that where I have the slab, the patio, that's my property, and the green turf is pretty much the city's property that I improved that was coming down the hill, so anybody can use that part of the property.
That's all, I'm just curious, where's the property line, just for curiosity?
Like I explained, it's right there where the slab ends and the turf starts.
Because I saw pins.
I'm sorry?
I saw some pins in that area that look like...
Yeah, that's, that's aligned with the property lines. And you can see that on the picture, too. Hold my package.
Now, do we have, can we get some sort of, maybe something from an engineer stating that, that wall behind, because it looked like it was cracked a little bit from, like, if you're looking at your property, like, head-on?
In the back?
In the back, because there's all those condominiums coming down, and it didn't, I don't know if it's stable on this side, it definitely doesn't look stable on this side, that we can just be reassured that it's, it's safe, that's...
The only wall that is not intact is my neighbor's wall.
To the right?
To Mary, and Randy, and Sue. That's the only wall in question here. The other wall towards condominiums are just thick and solid in the progress.
How long do you think this will take you to rectify? 30 days?
30 days.
For everything?
That's our goal. We have six guys, they're working day and night, I was going to say, so we should have it done in 30 days. That's our goal. They work their Monday through Friday.
Do we have more questions of the applicant?
I think my only concerns also were the safety. I just think it'd be easier to approve if it was already done. That way, it's kind of just, we can see, but...
We have the give and take, and we've put a lot of work into this, and it wasn't just my personal fault that the wall failed.
Of course.
It was because of the big rainstorm, and the wall itself that was there had only a six-inch footing. We're building a huge wall with a huge footing, so, I mean, I do, I was grading my backyard and cleaning up my backyard, and of course, that didn't help with the big rain, but I consider the commissioner to give me approval with the contingency that I need to finish the wall before I do any leasing, of course. I'm totally fine with that, and I'm taking every safety caution possible, blocked off the whole backyard.
If the commission had any desire, I mean, that could certainly be a, a condition. I think there's a couple of conditions, if you're inclined to move forward with this today, and that being that the retaining wall be completed, that the, the neighbor's deck, which it's my understanding, there's a commitment to replace that deck, is that correct?
Absolutely, yeah.
That the deck be completed, and that the gate that's currently, or at least was on the public parking area in the front be removed, which is supposed to be open to public anyway.
Sure.
So those three items, all which would have to be a condition as approved by our building inspector prior to the issuance of any conditional transient rental.
I'm fine with those contingencies, that would be fine with me.
Well, but there's one other wall, and that's the wall, not a wall, to the west, you sit a lot lower than, a lot of dirt with a building above it, so you're not going to address that, have you? I can't, but it's, it appears that there's been some excavation there, so...
A lot of dirt will be removed from the backyard to grade everything down, but right now, we have to move dirt.
That's the point, so there's been a change. So if you're grading things down, that wall to, that area to the west that sits a lot higher, is there any...
We designed the wall for the elevation, for the height. That's what Tim Kenby has done.
Well, good, so that'll be done also.
Of course.
Because we're only talking now about the, the wall to the north with that neighbor, but there's that other wall.
To the north above me? We're not, we're not changing the elevations towards the north in front of me there. That still stays intact.
So there is just all that dirt and nothing, nothing's changed?
No, we're not changing that. We're not changing that dirt elevation at all. There's a big tree there that will stay, we're not changing that elevation.
I just think, so it's as stable as it always was, it always will be, with no...
Yeah, yes. Come on up. Help me out, Tim.
I know, I know what you're talking about. There is a wall in the back, and there's two walls.
There's many walls.
Could you please identify yourself for the record? State your name.
My name is Tim Kenby, and I did the engineering for the retaining wall. There's, there are two, there are two walls. There's one on the Brannings property, and then there's one on the rear. So I think you didn't realize that there's also the one on the rear, so there's two walls.
No, I do realize that, I'm just saying that we keep talking about restoring the wall to 209, to that property. There's other exposure there to the elements, there's dirt, it's not a wall, there's dirt, but it's a whole lot of dirt.
There's going to be a retaining wall there also. Absolutely. There's two of them, there's two walls.
I don't, it looks like dirt to me when I was up there.
Well, there's going to be a wall back there.
That's good, so that should be, that should be done, too.
I sent it to John Gilbert yesterday, that shows it pretty easy, it's pretty easy to understand, and it shows the patio is also, but it just sounded like you didn't realize that there is a wall there, so that's why, yeah, there's two walls.
No, I, but we just keep talking about the one, that's why I was asking.
No, both of them have to be done.
I do understand that there's...
Both of them have to be done.
To the, to the north, and then to the west, there's other...
By the west, you mean the rear, the rear property.
Well, to, to the west, I mean, to the west, you know, as opposed to, the west beams that parallel to Beacon, Beacon goes north-south.
Yeah.
And then there's, to the back of the property, you've got a back property line that faces the west, that's all.
The west, I, I'm referring to as a rear wall, and the one on the Brannings wall, I'm referring to as the right wall, the right side of the property. It's like a nail, it's a property line wall, and then there's another wall.
I know, yeah.
You're right, it's a big load.
I was up there, that's all I'm asking, that that wall looks like there's a whole lot of elevation there.
About eight feet. We're going to put a retaining wall there, too. It's part of the design we're thinking, very well.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I'm just...
There is a building permit for it.
And that second wall can also be put into a condition of approval.
Yeah, that's what I mean, I wanted that approved.
And it's part of the whole, the whole permit, so it has to be... Thank you, Tim.
Any other questions of the applicant? Have you, if anyone else wishes to speak? Thank you. I think we're good for now.
Thank you, Olaf.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? Come forward, state your name.
Mary Stein, 209 Beacon Street, and I would have to say that this is a case of putting the cart before the horse, and in Tim Kenby's words, "The horses have all left the barn." And the situation in my backyard should not have happened. It's not because it suddenly rained, which was a contributing factor, but the main reason was because the hill next to the continuing hill of East Whitley, where my yard is, was removed. The hill was removed, granted, Olaf was going to put a new retaining wall there, but his timing was dead wrong. We told him about the, the forecasts for rains, we had an atmospheric river that was dumping and dumping and dumping, and it was going to continue to dump, and he removed his entire backyard. And that's why the wall next door came down, because there was a gap of support. And what I would like to see, I'm not here to address the yea or nay of his transient rentals, I just want everything put on hold until the work in the backyard is completed, and then I'm happy to talk about transient rentals, but the situation needs to be remedied first, I think, and I hope you see it that way also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Hi, Kate Rudden, 95 Plight Azul. One of the things that Commissioner Kennedy, who's not here today, recommended was for the staff to do a saturation review of Avalon, including Hamilton Cove as a community and Bahia Vista as a community. We're all for tourism to flourish, we have three viable revenue sources for tourism. We have day trippers that come in on the boat, we have cruise ships, and then we have people come stay at transient rental properties. The problem that I have is, in addition to approving all of these transient rentals, we have employers who are not able to hire employees because there's no affordable housing. So this is a great opportunity for the planning department to do some actual planning, and if there's two transient rentals side by side, maybe the city offers one transient rental, the owner can recoup costs, but the owner can also recoup costs if they rent to residents of Catalina Island, or we can have people come over from the mainland who want to live here and work here. So this all goes back to planning, it goes back to saturation. I don't know how we can say we're not saturated. If you look at the numbers, Avalon's at 43% active short-term rentals. We have no available housing for people. We have no available housing for people, employers. I would not want to be an employer. I'd have to, I don't want to have to buy a house to put up employees. So putting the pause on all of this, so it's really looked at as an entire community, I think would be beneficial. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else wish to speak on this matter? Please go forward.
David Thompson, Montana Chimes. Basically, what is happening here is we have how many hundreds of mini hotels? They're basically run as a hotel. The owner uses it like he's a little hotel owner. When they built Hamilton, there were mitigations. They had to build a tree mott, they put in a campground. And that was, the whole idea was that if you're going to do this, you're going to have to hire people to maintain your property, to clean, you know, do laundry, whatever else, there's got to be a mitigation. It's, it's not working. And whatever the mitigation needs to be, it needs to be something that will be kind of actually going to be doing some good and putting to a housing trust fund so that it reciprocates and grows. Otherwise, to tell you the truth, the city is getting screwed. What's happening is that there won't be anybody left here to work. And in the meantime, there'll be a lot of owners that are like, geez, I guess we should have done something about this a long time ago. Because it's going to come back to hurt them too. There won't be anybody here to maintain their properties, to do the electrical work, to repair the homes, paint the homes, everything else. There just won't be anybody living here. There'll just be a whole bunch of rental units. And I know it's the city's problem, they're supposed to be dealing with it. Where is the city, you know? Where's the council on this? But as far as I'm concerned, I know I've said this 100 times, I've been saying it for 20 years, we were on a housing task force back with, in the 80s, about the same situation of trying to prevent this kind of thing from happening. And it's just getting more and more and more, every month, two or three of these things are approved. I mean, do the math. And there's no new housing being built for anybody that can actually needs to be in the workforce, none. There's no money. And it really is just going to end up being a dead end for the owners of the properties also. Might be a good idea just to have one unit, use the old ones around.
Hello. Lindsay Mattingly, retired teacher. I came and spoke to the council last year about my concern about not having teacher housing. And I think that still continued on. I did meet a lovely first-grade teacher that had a temporary winter rental, that said, "I really would like to have a year-round rental, but I have the, that rental." And so I think we still need to consider that our school this year had all new teachers in the middle school. The, one of the English, the middle school English class has had three separate teachers this year. They come and they go. It's even, it's very difficult to get substitute teachers over here. There's nobody in the community that's a substitute teacher. They couldn't afford to live here. And just as it's difficult for the teachers to find a place that's affordable. So it's having a massive effect on our children in the community because of how it's affecting the school. And it's not just, I know people want to have waiters and waitresses. And a lot of the waiters and waitresses here are our students. And it's not an easy job. And we would like to have more of our local people be able to have jobs here and have the education they need to be good future workers. So it goes beyond just finding workers. It's training the children from a young age to be able to be good workers as well. And we need to get teachers who stay. And the way we do that is we give them good housing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we're going to close the discussion. I think we would all like to see more year-round housing. How you're going to get there, I don't know. You're going to have to come up with money to do it. I know myself, because I sell real estate, when I sell someone, something to someone from the mainland, which is a lot of the time, they want to come out and use it. So that's why you see transient rentals. When they're not using it, we collect 12% of what they're making. This one before us now, and I think that the density and all that is really a matter of talking to the city council because right now, we have, you know, rules in place that we follow and everyone's entitled to a hearing in that. But discussion on this particular property and the two transits that are in front of us.
I guess, I see a couple of things. One is in transient rental license, paragraph two, it talks about improvements on the property as part of the permit, that it's all basically complete. And I know the original staff report says it doesn't make any changes to the existing improvements or the property, but that's partially because that was already ongoing. So I think it clearly, there is improvements to the property that needs to be complete before it could go to the next phase of actually granting a business permit for this. And I think it really boils down to what the city manager said about a retaining wall on the deck and open right-of-way. I mean, as a minimum, those things would have to be complete and approved by the city. The right-of-way isn't a right-of-way, it's a front yard. There's no indication that it was. I don't know how it'd be fixed, but it's fixable. The retaining wall's clearly not there and it's just a disaster and I don't think anybody disagrees with that. And the deck has fallen apart and because of the drop in the retaining wall. So I'd say that's a minimum, that's a condition of approval, that those things would be done prior. I mean, that's kind of what I got out of this.
I agree with Eric. I just, it's about safety.
So where would we go with this? Would we hold it over?
There's a...
Until the work's done? They've stated that they can put it on as a condition of approval as well, so no one would rent it prior.
Yeah. I don't know. I was wondering about that. I was wondering, in a sense, the application is different than what was presented. And I don't think anybody's arguing that it's not a whole different ballgame. And in a way, it makes me think, I'd rather wait on approving something like this until we get caught up with all the existing issues and just get those laid to rest and then bring back before the condition, or the application for a transit rental if that's doable.
How, yeah, how can that be done?
And that's fine. I mean, it's, I didn't realize, I heard tonight, I think, the applicant indicated it'd take about 30 days to do that anyway, which puts us right in line with your next meeting. So, you know, if this was continued, I mean, I understand and I hear the safety concerns. My, my main concern is to make sure the neighbor is put back to home.
Absolutely.
And, and if this can be the carrot to make sure that gets done sooner rather than later, that was the thought of the conditional aspect of it, but...
Yeah, and I kind of like that. It doesn't sound like there's an argument from the applicant that that's not okay.
Right.
Based on what I heard.
If it's, if it's the Commission's choice to continue this, that you'd rather see it completed and be that brought back to you, what's their date for our June meeting?
21st, I think.
So, you know, right around 30 days from now anyways.
Yeah, and just to be fair to the applicant, if there's a way we could automatically have that extended if needed because the odds of things happening in 30 days are, you know, difficult at best.
So...
But anyway, but yeah, generally, I, I like that idea better because then it can be debated on what the property actually is and whether or not it's suitable for transit rental.
So let me, let me see if I understand. So we would just carry the whole meeting over and not even, because it's two properties, two separate properties that are asking for two separate permits. So I think, well, I, my proposal would be to come back when it's completed and then we will go start the process with...
Yeah, I think that's it is.
The, not like a condition of approval to...
Right, right. I think that's where I have to. So basically, just punt this off for at least 30 days and then see what, see what things look like and then pick up this applicant.
Sounds to me like for the applicant, we would be better off postponing this as there doesn't seem to be votes to pass this and you would, you know, have to appeal it to the city council. So it would seem to me that the 30 days, see if you finish the backyard and they can take it up and you might have a different outcome than you would right now.
Would that be to make a motion then to extend the...
Continue the public hearing to next week or to next meeting?
Describe what that would be so I can make a motion.
So what my recommendation would be, based on what you're discussing, is you would want to continue this hearing to a date certain so you could choose the next meeting, which is June 21st, to take this matter up again. And if the project needed to be continued again from that date, that could be done at the meeting.
And I'd make a motion that, yeah, I'd move that.
Is this what you were going to say?
Yeah. If I knew what I was saying, that's what I would have said.
Everybody understands that? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
I'll take the vote. Commissioner Putnam? Commissioner Romero?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruth?
Yes.
Commissioner Glass?
Yes.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Okay, Isaac, we have one, two, three, four, five, six yeses and two absent.
This is Scott, Donna. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Scott. I did that last time too.
I was like, Isaac's back?
Sorry.
And that's the attorney, the voice from above, so if anybody's wondering.
It's God.
Yeah.
Okay, the next two items are in my neighborhood, so I'm going to stand and turn it over to Eric.
Okay, our first Hamilton Cove transient rental is for 41 Camino de Flores. It's permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room with or without table boards in a dwelling unit for periods of fewer than 30 consecutive days. The owner and applicant is Angela Hill. Is there a representative in the audience? There is not. The property is located within the low-density residential zone and the property contains two bedrooms and two baths. And it is developed with a residential use consistent with the general plan as allowed under the 2023 growth policy. The property manager for the unit is listed as Bart Glass. His contact information is available in your staff report. The subject property and all surrounding properties are developed with single and multi-residential units. The requested transient rental license does not involve any physical changes to the existing residence that would adversely affect or be materially detrimental to adjacent uses, buildings and structures. The saturation map attached to the staff report indicates that oversaturation will not occur. I guess that one should actually say that the HOA allows for the transient rentals. I apologize. The proposed project is categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the State Sequel Guidelines, minor alterations in land use limitations, which do not result in changes in land use or density. The project does require a coastal development permit under Section 9-8.102B2V of the Avalon Municipal Code. The project is within the 300-foot appealable zone. City staff have received letters in opposition and you will find them included in your packets. Staff is recommending the planning commission find the project categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the State Sequel Guidelines in minor alterations in land use limitations, adopt the findings necessary as outlined in the staff report to support approval of the coastal development permit, including the project is within the 300-foot appealable zone, and find the application is allowed under the 2023 annual growth policy. That concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Open the hearing. Anybody wish to speak for or against? Please come to the podium, name and address. Thank you.
Hello, Kate Rudden, 95 Playa Azul. So again, speaking back to the saturation data that was presented by Matthew Baker at the Joint Planning Commission and City Council, Hamilton Cove is at 68% active vacation rentals. If you add in the 19 transient rental permits that people are holding and not utilizing, that takes us to 78%. If you approve 22 and 14 tonight, that takes us to 70%. How can you say that there's not an oversaturation issue? Hamilton Cove, people buy in Hamilton Cove. It was set by the Coastal Commission. There's this big rumor that the Coastal Commission demanded that Hamilton Cove incorporate short-term vacation rentals as a condition of the development of Hamilton Cove. Two residents of Hamilton Cove, Pat and Dr. George McCormick, worked with Coastal Commission and had the original documents sent from Sacramento and they went to the Long Beach offices. They reviewed thousands of documents. Not once, not once, did the Coastal Commission require that the development inside Hamilton Cove require short-term vacation rentals for the approval of the permit to develop Hamilton Cove. During the appeal process in 1980, the Sierra Club requested that 25% be allowed for short-term vacation rentals. The developer asked for approximately, approximately 50% of the 161 condominiums to be developed in Hamilton Cove be eligible for short-term vacation rentals. So the Coastal Commission never required it. The city and the planning commission rely on this to hide behind. We have an oversaturation issue. We have a serious housing crisis within the community of Avalon. For people to buy in Hamilton Cove and then come to this planning department and say, "The only way I can afford to live there is to do a short-term rental to afford to live there." Well, if you just spent $1.7 million to purchase something, somebody must have along the way said, "No problem getting a short-term vacation rental" because that's the only argument that somebody could come in here with to say, "I need that permit in order to afford it." We're not against tourism, but we have to be smart about it. We have to be sustainable. Hamilton Cove is the canary in the coal mine. Avalon is nearing 43%. We're going to celebrate 50% because it's going to happen. So let's do some productive planning. The building behind me is at 100%. Building two will be at 85% occupancy. The density, the noise, Hamilton Cove provided $1.2 million to the city last year in TOT. There is no enforcement of Avalon Municipal Code within the community, residential community of Hamilton Cove. There are no signs up. We brought this up six months ago. Not one sign is up. There's no enforcement of laws related to the municipal code within the community of Avalon. So if you're going to tax us, but not give us the services that we're paying for, that's taxation without representation. So I am pleading with the planning department to use some of that TOT money to hire code enforcement, to come to Hamilton Cove, to enforce code, to put up signs, to deal with nuisance issues. We drove by yesterday a four-person golf cart with nine people on it. four-person golf cart with nine people on it. Talk about safety. That's not safe. We have to make it good for residents and visitors. Overcrowding does not make a pleasant experience for people who come out here to pay and pay big money to be, enjoy the community that we live in. So please consider that. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Berkman. I'm a proud owner, eight-eighty-eight in Hamilton Cove. I'm an original owner, owner almost thirty-five years now. I echo everything that Kate just spoke about, but I'm actually here to speak on a different term, and that's my safety. Twice in the last six weeks, seven weeks or so, I've been relaxing in my living room to have strangers walk into my home, intoxicated strangers. One time I was there alone and it was two men and they were bombed, having a great time, thinking that they walked into their rental unit that they were renting for the weekend. I escorted them out. About three weeks ago, I was here with a girlfriend of mine. Again, we were in the family room. We had the back door open for the breeze and in walks another gentleman. And I don't know where they were renting. I have no idea, but it was the second time in six or seven weeks now that it's happened. I was actually walking to the pool a few weeks ago and there were three or four young men jumping up and down on a golf cart trying to flip it over. And they saw me as I was walking to the pool and started heckling me and started giving me all kinds of attitude or whatever. I didn't feel safe. I turned around, went back to my own home. I have never, ever, in thirty-four or thirty-five years of enjoyed owning in Hamilton Cove, have I felt unsafe. Unsafe for myself, unsafe for my children and my family, and that is a problem. I have no problem except with renters and it's only getting worse. I don't know if any of you live up in Hamilton Cove or get to enjoy Hamilton Cove at all, but it's getting to the point now where I'm concerned about my safety and my family's well-being. And that's what I'm here to speak about. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I've spoken before. My name is Jonna Stone. I live in one of the single-family, well, actually, they're all supposed to be single-family homes according to the HOAs, but I live in the only single-family private, I'm like the top, of Hamilton Cove. I say that because it's, I echo everything that has been said. I personally don't hear a lot of the noise from the vantage points that I have and I'm very grateful for that. It's only when I go down into where the condos are that it gets real scary with people. I don't know where they come from. It's almost like they're Carnival cruise people, but they're not. But they're, you know, jumping on golf carts, creating havoc, skateboarding down the street, which they're not supposed to do on the way to the pool. It's been very uncomfortable. And my, one of my complaints is when we were building our house, the building inspector came up several times and had to approve various things along the way. And that always happened. Well, what's going on with all my neighbors, and I'm not, I'm not personally acquainted with them, but they're not single-family homes. They're giant duplexes with separate entrances, a minimum of two kitchens. What, the latest one has three. They can, the house next door to me can rent, has two CUP, transient rental permits, and can rent to sixteen people a night. And that's in the house next door. We actually have the only single-family home up there. When the HOAs and the charter says that every residence in Hamilton Cove will be a single-family home, that's not the case now. And I echo completely the lack of code enforcement. I'm a former prosecutor. It makes me crazy that I can't do anything about it. It's dangerous in Hamilton Cove these days. Well, it, not so much right now, but wait till summer and it's gonna be a complete nightmare. And I, before we issue more rental permits and go to seventy percent, I didn't intend to live in a hotel. I understand the need for rentals and I think it's great. And we love most of our renters, but we get to know them at the pool or in the gym. But it's gone too far. And seventy percent short-term rentals is not right. And that's what it will be if we issue more permits. I understand there's a Fourteenth Amendment that says people similarly situated are entitled to the same thing. I can see that people who buy a home and are told that they can rent it, think that they're automatically going to get it. It's not right to tell them that. It's not right for the rest of us who didn't plan on living in a zoo to be living in the zoo. So I hope that you consider that. And I hope that we can also get some code enforcement. And I hope that we can be safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Did I close the public hearing? Any discussion?
I just have a couple of questions for staff. Is there any way, well, I can't ask them questions, but to find out, like, have all this information from, been presented to the, their, their board at Hamilton Cove? And has any, I mean, all this, this, that you are concerned about, have you presented it to the board? Are there any also, like, the lady said that people walking in her house and not feeling safe. Are, do you notify the police? Do you notify the, the security guards and nothing is being done?
I don't know. I don't know what's being done. I get them out of my house immediately.
Okay, but.
I have all security and I don't know what happens after that.
They don't follow up with you or anything like that?
No, I don't have any knowledge.
Okay.
I don't know what's your job or not. You know, it's a big, like, security person at the gate. You allow people in and out and try to be, and they're all great, it's okay, we're wrong, so, you know.
I mean, these are concerning what you, what you brought up, but I'm just saying that there's a security.
I just think the, the back and forth from, she's not at the podium, the back and forth.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I just wanna know, like, I mean, I know they have a security guard in place. I know that we aren't able, they're CCNR state, that we're not able to put signage in their, their, the units.
We, we can put signage in the units.
Okay.
Actually, that was a question I had. I remember having this discussion and I thought the end result was.
I thought they said they were gonna start doing it and signs were made.
There's, whether or not the HOA prohibits signage in the unit does not control whether or not the enforcement of the city code. They don't, they don't control the city code. The city code trumps that.
Okay, so I'm, I'm happy and pleased to hear that because many years ago, we were told the opposite. So that's, that's good. I'm glad to hear that.
I guess is that a happening thing?
Right.
I can tell you currently, the short-term rentals have the signs posted inside the buildings by the front door.
Okay.
That's what the HOA is required.
Okay, so that, okay, and?
And that any issue that arises, they're supposed to call the gate.
Okay.
And then identify it.
And identify the unit.
Okay, and then to make a formal complaint to the city, what's the proper way?
They can go online or they can come and fill out a formal complaint as well.
Okay, because if they get three complaints, then it comes to us and it can be withdrawn.
It could be revoked.
Very rarely does that ever actually happen.
Correct.
So somehow that's falling through the cracks. But if you have questions about how to file a complaint, just call the city and they'll start to direct you.
In fact, shortly after my, one of my meetings with, with Kate, I mean, we have moved the city complaint button, so to speak, trigger on the front page of the, the city webpage. The very first page center is to file the complaint and to file the complaint with, whether it's a noise violation, whether it's a violation, you know, too many people in a unit, whatever's going on right there, that that can happen. I mean, I know the sheriffs respond up there. I, I can just tell you whether, whether or not we are two, we have two code enforcement officers. If we added them on a Friday night at two in the morning, we, the scheduling might not allow that we're gonna have code enforcement on at the time that these complaints come in.
Right, it's gonna be a slow.
We are responding to them and we, our goal for twenty-twenty-three this year is to bring, last year was the first time any revocations were brought to planning commission on these, and we're gonna continue to bring those. And now we're getting into the areas where we get complaints on units that we're documenting and to bring the highest quality or the highest volume of violators. So, I mean.
A separate question I have that you, that you alluded to is the sheriff department, do they go in there like they do the rest of the city?
Yes.
Do they do a patrol through it? Okay.
Oh, do they patrol regularly? I don't know if they do that. My guess is no. I mean.
And that might be something.
If I drove out there right now, I wouldn't get past the gate. They will not let me pass the gate.
Right, but I'm assuming the sheriffs get a free pass.
They get a free pass. And, and no, they, they can certainly, they can certainly do that, patrol that. That's, that's.
But I know they'll drive up my street, you know. It seems like regular basis, then I don't seem for a long time, and then they go for regular. And it might be a good thing to mention at the next interdepartmental meeting, just to have them.
Absolutely.
Just do a drive-through and let their presence known, because it sounds like the internal security is getting less than what people think it should be.
That's a great idea. I also, and like I say at every meeting, these permits can be revoked. The problems that you're having at Hamilton Cove, they can be addressed and the city has a new website, like Dave said, and you can go on there and file immediately a complaint. And once, there's, I think, three? Is it three or?
We don't even say, depending on the, the nature of the complaint, of how serious it is, I mean, we, you know, have addressed and specifically threatened non-Hamilton Cove people because our number one complaint is not in Hamilton Cove. Our number one complaint property does not reside out there. And I'm not, not to say that it's not out there, we just don't receive the complaints. Nobody's going and filing the formal complaint. So we've addressed those with the property owner directly. And they significantly went down when we actually threatened to remove and go for a revocation.
So I think we do have a process in place for that. And I know I would appreciate if people have these issues that you're having with these conditional use permits, if you just went on and filed a, a formal complaint, then we can address it. I mean, it's, we can't, it's hard to address something when something has passed and we weren't aware of it. And, and I just feel like, put everything in writing in a formal complaint so that we have something to be able to address. Because we all have, even in town, I mean, I live across from a hotel. So it's, I mean, it's here, especially in the summertime, but if you don't, I mean, I know by the time it's happens and then you go to bed, then you wake up, it's over and then, you know, I've done it before and not remembered or it didn't, you know, was over. But it's, if you can just file a formal complaint so that we have a paper trail and we can go and address the issues. And I think that's a great idea about the, that's a start. And I do know that, I've seen some sort of, I had family stay at Hamilton Cove last summer and they had visitors that were staying in town and they can't, couldn't get in the gate if they are not on that rental agreement, that they, they could not get on, in the gate, not even to go to the pool, not even. So, and then I, I believe that there are fines and, and things that Hamilton Cove has and that has their own set of rules for, I don't know if they're following them or they're enforcing them, but like I said, there is a process to get them revoked.
I, I just wanna say something. I, I might be alone in this, but I truly find it, I think it's great that we have community members coming and voicing how you guys feel for your million-dollar property that you pay for. I, I think it's kind of appalling that, you know, we're sitting here and these things are coming. I really wish the, the community in Avalon, not just Hamilton, would come and speak up on different matters like this so we can actually make a change. It just seems like, just to me, it seems like we come up with certain solutions, but it doesn't seem like where I'm seeing any solutions to any of this. I am new here. I don't have years up here and all of that stuff, but that can be a little bit of a benefit. Honestly, I'm not seeing a solution to the situation at hand. We get these often and they are often approved. And I just don't know where the change is supposed to come in, you know? Whether we approve or deny at Hamilton, I for one will never live at Hamilton. I am an ordinary person who rents. So I don't see, what I'm trying to say is where does the change actually happen? I'm, I'm confused. Like, I, I don't understand where the change is gonna happen.
But interestingly, we're administering existing ordinances right now as put before us. And the transient rentals is something this city's been knocking around for fifty years. And it's difficult to change. Our last two-year effort resulted in.
In a change.
In a change. And saturation was a huge debate and to where it was, even got to where we were thinking fifty percent plus one regardless of the neighborhood. And that didn't hold. There was no consensus except at one thing, which I thought was pretty major and just barely passed. And that was to switch it from a land use entitlement, conditional use permit that ran with the land, once you got approval for a transient rental, to a business license, which doesn't run with the land. So when you sell it, someone has to come in and redo it. That way, if other policies change, it would be easier to implement new policy. But our policy hasn't. And I think the argument partly is the history in Avalon is we have about the same overall transit units now as we did forty years ago. There's just this coming and going. A lot of other cities with, are, you know, with the new online housing rentals, were struggling with this to start with. And we had a lot of history. They even were looking at how we dealt with it, which really didn't apply to any other city but this city. So we really weren't all that helpful. But it's tough. And right now, we're looking at the laws we have on the books and saturation definitely impacts neighborhoods. It impacts flats probably as much as Hamilton. And it definitely impacts Hamilton. But there is no number. I mean, there is eighty, ninety percent. It's, there's nothing. And it's, it's not by accident. It's by policy. So. So, I mean, hopefully that makes sense. I mean, that's where we are today. And it's really a political decision to change that.
Correct.
And we don't, that's not our job in this role. Planning is politics, at least in policy. Administering is, do you meet the criteria? Which only seems fair, because to me, that makes perfect sense. Because once you change policy, you don't want people changing policy at administrative level. You want them administering policy. If we start changing policy at this level, it sort of creates chaos in terms of what people can expect.
And in that policy, there's, like I said, ways to address the issues that residents are having with short-term rental.
And right now, we're hoping we can pick off the bad apples and stop them. But they have to be called out.
Right. And I'm sure there's no question, I, I think it's been said here a couple times by the residents out there, that the majority of the renters are good, law-abiding, respect everybody else. It doesn't matter. If you live next to the one that comes in that weekend and is partying, I mean, nobody here wants to deal with it either. But we, it's enforcement of it. And it's just not, I mean, it's not a matter of code or the city hiring as many people as possible to walk around to listen to see if there's parties going on. We only react to the calls that come in. The sheriff will react if a call comes in. They will go out there and enforce if somebody is violating the noise ordinance. And same with the city, but we have to have, I mean, we have very few calls on Hamilton Cove. And I believe a hundred percent what they're saying, that they have.
No doubt. I think we all experience that, that's the irony in this. I have people walk into my house for the first time in a while.
Yeah.
It just, and I don't live, yeah, anyway.
Right.
We all have that happen to us, and it kind of catches you off-guard, and then you think, oh, okay. You know, and it's not that big of a shock. And it's shocking. Yeah, I mean, it is. Strange men scare me in my house.
Right.
It, it is a reality, and it's not okay at all. I mean, it's terrible. So then I lock my door for a month, you know?
Right, but I guess.
And then I forget to lock the door, yeah.
The point would be if there's twenty percent transit rentals there, that could still happen, right? So it's not, and we have, we have to receive the calls, residents have to call, and we have to act on that. And the city has to enforce, and the sheriff has to enforce.
Correct.
But we have to know what we're looking at.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Before, any motion?
Oh. Before I make, before our motion is made, can I just say one more thing?
Absolutely.
I have been saying this for a while. I don't, I don't think, can we change it? But I, I, with these applications, I feel that, like, the, the people that are their property managers or the person that's available to, I, I don't know if we can have it done, but I, I feel like a vacation property, a vacation rental company should be required in not just like a friend or someone that is on the island. Or, I mean, is that something that we can, I mean, it seems like it's a lot. But I feel like just, they can just put like their friend that lives next door or someone down the road, but are they really truly like, I mean, property manager that's gonna be available twenty-four hours a day when you call or something? Because I know like a lot of the property, the property managers here have like certain numbers that you can call twenty-four hours a day, and, and they answer, and they actually have people that respond to incidents. And I think that it's kind of in, that it's important to know that someone will respond always, you know, and have their phone on twenty-four hours a day. You know, if that's the true property managing company that states that, I think that's important.
It's a requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it is a requirement, but a lot of people will just put, like, I know people that, like, just housekeeping that take, and they just put their name down. And are they truly a property manager, just someone? And how do we know, like, they're gonna be available twenty-four hours a day and be able, on the island and not off the island? At least a property manager state has someone there twenty-four hours a day or someone that's on duty or not, you know?
Right. So one of the things we did coming out of, I believe it was February where we had our joint meeting with council.
Mm-huh.
Coming out of that, one of the things that we did was included that as a required line item that they have to provide on their business application.
Okay.
That we didn't have prior, and that was a problem. That was just a gap that we weren't requiring that person, individual, business to be like, to be listed. And then we cross-referenced to make sure that person has a business license.
Okay.
So it just wasn't, but that was one of the positive, easier changes we were able to make coming out of that February meeting.
Okay, I must have forgotten that. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
With the conditions one through five?
Correct. With the conditions one through five.
Do I hear a second? I'll second it, just to get a vote on it. So moot and second. Any discussion before the vote? Seeing none, call for a vote.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
No.
Commissioner Ruth?
No.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Se?
Yes.
Okay, Scott. We have three yeses, two noes, and two absent.
Is it a majority of?
Got it. Thank you.
Is that a pass?
That's a pass.
Motion carried.
We have one more from Hamilton Cove. They're requesting a transient rental license and coastal development permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room with or without table boards in a dwelling unit for periods of fewer than thirty consecutive days. The unit is twenty-two, Comino de Flores, unit number thirty. The owner and applicant is Randy and Emma Gomez. They are present in the audience today. The property is located within the low-density residential zone. The property contains two bedrooms and two baths, and is developed with a residential use consistent with the general plan and is allowed under the twenty-twenty-three growth policy. The property manager for the unit is listed as CIVR, current here too. The subject property and all surrounding properties are developed with single and multi-residential units. The requested transient rental license does not involve any physical changes to the existing residence that would adversely affect or be materially detrimental to adjacent uses, buildings, and structures. Under the rules of Hamilton Cove Homeowners Association, a saturation analysis is not relevant for transit rental units within Hamilton Cove, which is the location of the proposed use. The proposed project is categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the State Sequel Guidelines, minor alterations in land use limitations, which do not result in changes in land use or density. The project requires a coastal development under Section nine dash eight point one oh two B two B of the Avalon, excuse me, Avalon Municipal Code. The project is within the three-hundred-foot appealable zone, and city staff have received letters in opposition, and they are also in your packets. Staff is recommending the planning commission find the project categorically exempt under Section 15305 of the State Sequel Guidelines, minor alterations in land use limitations, adopt the findings necessary as outlined in the staff report to support approval of the coastal development permit, including that the project is within the three-hundred-foot appealable zone, and find the application is allowed under the twenty-twenty-three annual growth policy. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, open the hearing. Anybody wish to speak for or against? Name and address.
Hi, my name's Susanna, one hundred Banning Drive. I have to run out of here really quick, but I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Romero's comment on the last item, and some of the back-and-forth that went on there about, you know, who exactly has the jurisdiction for these kind of permits? And whose responsibility is it to clean all this up and look at it? Council's been throwing around a lot. But I do think, when you guys are talking about all these problems, you know, the solution would be, if it's not enforcement, changing our municipal code, which would be an internal process, you know, with staff, with commissioners. That is the whole point of having local legislation, and that's subject to change. And it's a pretty big phenomenon that's been happening throughout California right now in coastal cities, that a lot of municipal codes are changing their vacation regulations. And becoming more strict, just because they typically haven't been regulated in the past. With places limited, you know, to one percent, certain zones, that kind of stuff. So for here, there's no, the current requirements say that the planning commission has to consider saturation. But at the end of the day, there is zero overall cap. There are zero restrictions on number of licenses. There are zero restrictions on how many months you have to be occupied. We do not have any kind of encumbrances to this kind of permit. And we are approving, you know, discretionarily, we can say yes or no. But you guys are approving a hundred percent of them. So the numbers are going up. You know, this might have been a vacation rental town since it was started, but mathematically, you know, exponentially, that's, that's where the direction is going right now. So I think if the commission doesn't feel comfortable having that discretionary power to say no, when there's that gray, when the code gives you that ambiguity, you know, with words like consider and, you know, discuss, and, you know, based on the site. And you don't have any hard caps or anything like that, or regulations. It puts pressure on you guys to say yes or no. Which I feel like has just defaulted to a yes, because people don't really want to impede development. So there are a lot of good model ordinances out right now. And then the State Department, HCD, and the Coastal Commission, they have a lot of good resources too for what other cities are doing and stuff like that. So just let it throw it out there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susanna.
Thank you, Susanna.
Kate Redden, ninety-five plies, Yole. I do want to thank David, because in the last six months, since we've brought all of this to your attention, we've had some really productive conversations. We've also gone to city council and shared with David municipal code that other cities have incorporated that we could easily incorporate. But you have to have controls. You have to have enforcement. And then you have to audit whether the process is working for your community. I think we can all agree that it's not working. We are beyond the tipping point. In Avalon, we have more people leaving. Good, talented, qualified people who want to raise families here, who want to work here, who want to live here, that cannot afford housing. It's heart-wrenching. I've had so many conversations with people who are leaving the island. Appliance people, plumbers, contractors, teachers. I sent a letter to the city council, and I said, you have to consider the cost of loss. Yes, you're getting a ton of income from short-term vacation rentals. But at what cost to our community? So it's imperative that we stop the crazy wheel, the gerbil wheel, because it's, it's not helping. So you're gonna have to make some tough decisions. You're gonna have to say no, because you can't take Avalon to beyond fifty percent. Hamilton Cove, I know, will get approved, this will get approved, will be beyond seventy percent. To answer Yole's question, the agreement for a transitional permit requires a rigorous look at all sorts of different things related to that permit. It's not automatic. It's a relationship between the city and the homeowner. The homeowners association has absolutely no authority over giving out a transitional permit. They can assess fines, which they do. David, for the first time ever in the history of transitional rental permits, put the complaint form online. We need to communicate to our community that there's a new process in place. We hear you. Here's the process. Here's the number for the sheriff's department. Here's the complaint form. You can attach a video. You can attach a picture. Communicate to our community. You're hearing people complain. We've come to complain. We had no, no avenue to complain. That's how we came in front of you. I am going to, with your permission, approach the dius and show you what the city of Palm Desert has done. And this is just a pamphlet that goes out to people. It's in their newspaper, it's on their website. But it's basically saying, good neighbor brochure for short-term renters. Easy. Doesn't require council to approve, doesn't require your approval. I sent this to Jim Lutjahan to get this out to our hotels and to our short-term vacation rental companies. These are simple solutions. We need to communicate to our people. Residents are on the top of our org chart. You support the residents of Avalon. Yet, we're becoming an endangered species. People are leaving our community. Good people are leaving our community. So I am opposed to any more vacation rentals until we can fix the controls, the enforcement, and audit. I'm not saying no more tourism. We have other avenues to bring tourism dollars in. But if you don't have employees to make the tourists feel good that are working two and three jobs to be able to afford to live here, who are up all night because there's a vacation rental, next to them partying till three o'clock in the morning, and they have to be the face of Avalon and make sure people have a great experience when they visit here, that's not right. What are we doing to our residents? So thank you for your time. I will hand this up to Donna, she can distribute it.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Randy Gomez. It's a little hard act to follow since I just bought at Hamilton Cove. And I'm one of those people from the mainland that dreamed all my life to end up here. Spent forty years in the television, film industry, recently retired. Grew up in San Pedro, and I spent a lot of summers here. My family came to work here during the summers. I came along. I was one of those kids diving for coins when the big white steamer came in every summer. So, that being said, I understand the issues, and I can relate. Our plan, my wife and my family, is to not profit from this rental. It's to have a place for our family. Yes, we would like to offset some of the cost. The HOAs are thirteen-hundred and fifty dollars a month alone. So, as a retiree, you know, I am, I have to consider the costs. But just to reassure certainly the people in Hamilton Cove, the unit that we bought. Cove, um, the unit that we bought is at the very top of building three. It crosses no one else's door to get there. Um, it has a private balcony, uh, so it's, I, I would feel that it would be, um, less invasive, anyone that may be staying there, if that's the concern. And, um, I understand the, you know, people walking into your door, yeah, that's an issue, but truthfully, as you said, that can happen anywhere in Avalon and anywhere, you know, I owned a vacation rental in Palm Springs and we actually sold that to come here. And so we went through the process, but we went with a reputable agency that rented, screened the people, and we're doing the same here with Catalina Vacation Rentals. So we're very proud of the unit, it's a beautiful unit, and of the people that will probably be renting it will, will, will see that it's special and act accordingly. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Corina, Catalina Island Vacation Rentals. Just a reminder that we also have tools and systems in place that are there, they have become better through the years because of the forums that have been built, vacation rentals having a bad reputation. So I just want to remind everyone that yes, it's uncomfortable to be woken up at two AM, I live right under a vacation rental, and, uh, it's not pleasant to have to call us, call the police when already your sleep has been disturbed, but it's important to do so, number one, avoid those people coming back, whether they stay with us, whether they stay with Bard, whether they go to Airbnb, they will return and they will continue to be a nuisance. So that will help eliminate them altogether. And, uh, we just need to have those examples, we need to know what happens. If we don't know what happens and we just hear, get hearsay, it can become quite aggressive approaching a guest after the fact. So I just want to advocate again towards our line, all of our after, after-hours calls gets recorded, so there's a proof that who called and what happened at the hour. So just wanted to accentuate on that part once again. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think everybody spoke who's here, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any discussion? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and approved, any discussion on this motion? Seeing done, call for vote?
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
No.
Commissioner Ruth?
No.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Seay?
Yes.
It is approved. Um, Scott, we have three yeses, two nos, and two absent.
I'll go get, uh, Bart.
Thanks, Donna. Um, that math, um, three yeses, two nos, and two absent?
Three yeses, two nos, two absent.
Did, did one of the previous commissioners leave or?
Um, Chairman Glass recused himself.
He recused himself? Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, commissioner business? Anything from staff?
Nothing else from me.
Not me.
Next, we move to right out, next reading is the twenty-first?
I believe it's the twenty-first. Yes.
Okay. Say goodnight, Tony? And thanks to our new planning director for coming, thank you.